More rehearsing than anybody else, Weisler's is all it takes.
If you only have one, I think it would be a great one.
Who invited the lawyer?
All right, good evening to everyone from the main, next 2019 City of Mount Vernon Council Meeting to Order. Not aware of any changes to the agenda that we have in front of us. Chris did hand out a revised copy of ordinance five dash six dash 2019A. There's a nine missing in the packet, so heads up there.
I've got change all over the...
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Areas, next item, Communications. Everybody that would like to address the council, please do so now. Seeing anybody, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of council minutes from April 15, council meeting. Approval of cigarettes for myths for God thingy, P and P, here is clues. And approval of liquor license for CC.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Well, I was gonna say, uh, minutes, I think there's a couple things. Resolution for approval, page two.
Word paragraph or something?
Uh, resolution approval. If not approved, the city may lose control of this infrastructure, it guidelines, period. So, there's something missing there. I'm not sure what is missing there, but it's a complete sentence there. And then, uh, the last, whole last sentence, um, something about the number of, um, applications received by Matt Siders. It says 22, and the next sentence says 24. There have been over 22 applicants for the recreation coordinator positions. As usual, likely starting at the end of the month, the city has received 24 applications for the recreation coordinator. So, I don't know what the right answer, if it's 22, 24, 25.
Well, it says over 22, which is 24.
Well, yeah, 25.
Thank you.
I think it's, uh, 28.
Whatever the number is, but, uh, somewhere in there, those, those two. Then I would second your motion.
Okay.
But those are two things.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Next item, public hearing on proposed ordinance adopting Chapter 153 demolition regulations of the Mount Vernon municipal code. I'm gonna open the public hearing. Everybody that would like to address the council on this. Seeing no one, close the public hearing. Move on to ordinance five dash six dash 2019A. Adopting Chapter 153 demolition regulations of the municipal code of Mount Vernon, Iowa. Chris?
Mayor, Council, Guy Booth and Leah Rogers both reviewed this. That is why you have the first page of the exhibit with one red mark on it. They asked for that language change to say identify herein versus, um, within a his staff, established historic district. So, individual buildings themselves aren't in historic districts at times, so the language change was fine. That was the only thing that they pointed out, so with that, I think, um, as far as I can tell with all the discussion we've had, this is where we want it to go.
Just have one question on this.
Can I rekindish this?
Yeah. There was a, on designating it as whether it's historic or not, and... It says at the bottom, there's a thing, like, like I said, where's that at on the?
Are you talking about like the A, B, C, D, historically?
What page number?
Um, oh, I just came to this thing. I wanna say the 24.
24 there.
Yeah.
Here it is, historically significant buildings are. And at D, it says individually listed on a local inventory of historic places in communities with historic preservation programs that have been certified by either, and then it goes, an approved state program is determined by the state of the interior or directly by the state of the interior, and states without approved programs. So, the way I read this is that if you're a preservation program within the city, and it's been approved by the state, that you can have a database that you can just pull up at any time and say, hey, you're, you're on the list. That's what I read out of this. So, if we got a database for the historical preservation, they, they got a database, and they say, well, Eric Roddenbush's house is on there. But I don't know it's on there. So, I go to get something demolished, and oh, by the way, we've got a little big database here that your house is on. That's the way I read that right now. Am I wrong on that?
So, as long as they have... So, they do have a list of historically significant buildings in the city.
Right.
Yes, it would delay your demolition, wouldn't necessarily prevent your demolition because you have an appeal process, but it could delay your demolition, correct.
But these houses are not certified by the state. They're certified by the city preservation committee. So, like I said, people don't know they're in it.
And you're referring to D under there?
Exactly. They don't know they're in it, so that, that's what bothers me. So, you've got somebody that doesn't live in a historical district, that all of a sudden goes in to get their house, you know, puts something down to their house, and find out that it's on this list within the city. And that's the only place they're at.
So, do we need to add something about communication to inform these people?
Well, they should be notified before this is passed so that they can get their names off of it they want. Because once this is passed, they're kinda screwed.
But they wouldn't get their names.
Right.
So, the building itself...
Why wouldn't they?
The building itself is historically significant as determined by the standards set forth by the Secretary of the Interior.
No, by the, the city. That's what D's saying.
But, but it's based upon the standards set forth by the Secretary of Interior, so that's an established guideline.
Yeah, but it's saying that the committee is certified by the state, and so that the committee can set their standards. You kinda manipulate it to whatever they wish. You know, that, yeah, you can probably, let's say you're on it, and it's done and everything, you said, you can probably protest it, and it could take six months or whatever to get it off, but during that time, you're delayed. That I don't like, I just...
Is, is the inventory referred to in item D here, is that a publicly available, published inventory that people can see?
I don't know, as well, if anybody requested it, they could, is it on our website? No.
It seems a little contrary to a designation where someone, I agree with you, may not be aware...
Exactly.
That there are this inventory if we're not making it public or aware. When properties are bought and sold, is this designation communicated at that point in time to...
Only if they're on the national register or within a district, national historic district.
Can we ask for that provision? Why, what prevents us from asking for that, for the owner to be notified by the historic preservation commission that they are on?
You can, what I'm saying is, the owner still wouldn't necessarily be able to request that their house came off if it's designated as historically significant, though.
Yeah, I understand that, but it would address, you know, Eric is talking about some circumstances where they may not even know when it's going to be...
I guess an example would be current, for instance, they're working on the historic designation of the six brick homes. Six, right?
Eleven.
Yeah, there's...
Eleven brick homes. Those are not nationally registered yet. They're working through the designation. I think the point was, is that if somebody asked to demolish those homes, they would want a provision, kind of a stay of execution, that you will. They still have the appeal to city council, um, but it could be delayed, yes.
I think he should be taken off, to be honest with you.
Well, I mean, I, I appreciate the, I appreciate what Eric brought up, and I also appreciate the, the reason why D is in here. But I think without that appeal to have that listing be public in some fashion, I think we've kind of hampered, or we've hamstrung some people perhaps, unknowingly.
Is this list in a digital format, or is it paper, or will we...
Well, may I address that?
Yep.
Guy Booth and I am on the Historic Preservation Commission. Historically, or a little bit of history, when the city decided that we should have a historic preservation commission, and we passed an ordinance, making it a, a city governmental entity, which meant we are a certified local government, that meant a couple of things. First of all, if we are, and the city has asked us to be a certified local government, we are obligated to adhere to all of the state and federal guidelines on historic preservation. Eric, you are suggesting that, that some, whatever our discretion is, that's not true. We have guidelines, we have guidelines.
But there, we have laws that one person thinks it's deciphered this way, and one person decides it this way. So, if you, as a committee, decide, well, we think it's this way, and then you have to go through all these appeals, and by the time it gets to the guys, you know, in the state, that they say, no, I think you misinterpreted this guideline, we, we, you know, there's, there's areas of gray there that can be interpreted different by different people.
There's gray areas in every ordinance, I grant you that. But, but that, that's our function, that's our duty, that's our responsibility. So, I just wanted to make clear to everybody that we have standards that we have to comply with because we are the certified local government unit of the City of Mount Vernon. Now, the, the list of, of homes that have, or buildings that have historical significance was prepared at the time that we became certified local government. We had hired consultation from experts to review the city. We have a picture of every structure in the city, and every structure was in some way looked at to see its age and its significance. So, yes, that is something that historic preservation could put on their, their website just by saying, yes, put it on your website, make it available to every citizen in, in the city. We have that, and, um, it may not be on the website, I don't know for sure, but it could be put on within a day. So, so everybody would know where they are. Now, when I had, had taken a look at, at this ordinance, and I was looking back at, on the first page, 153.01, there was a, a one-sentence paragraph that said, except for structures in established historic districts of the city, this ordinance does not apply to demolition of existing porches. Porches have become sort of a hallmark of this community. And my only, and this is the only thing that I would ask for that changed at all, is to say, except for historic structures identified in the ordinance. This ordinance does not...
That's what they have.
And in the hard time.
That's what I handed out.
So, so, so all I'm saying is that Eric has, has a good point in saying, well, what is the public notice that you have been considered an historic structure? That is an established list, and that can be published, and, and I'll suggest to the commission that it goes onto our website, or, and which of course is available to the City of Mount Vernon website.
But whether or not that's up there for everybody to see, those properties are still gonna be...
Exactly, people just don't go online, just, just look for their house to be demolished.
That's not gonna change for the Secretary of the Interior.
But Eric, I think there is, I mean, I get your point, but there is a responsibility for homeowners to find out if, if they are.
There is?
There is.
That's the farthest thing from, from a person's mind, that they think that their house is on the historic registry.
Well, then they'll, they'll find out when they go...
Exactly.
Right, which, and at that point...
Pretty well hamper them.
For what I think is a reasonable amount of time that we've discussed ad nauseam, so...
I just wanna point out two, two things. Number one, they can still do that. So, in the case of Iowa City, those houses that were basically on the stay of execution, the neighboring property owners got an immediate injunction from a judge stopping the demolition of those homes. So, even if it's, the language is removed, there's still possibility that the Historic Preservation Commission, on behalf of the city, could file an injunction, which actually gets a little uglier because now you're going directly to the court to ask them. So, I guess the, the reasoning behind this was, we've had houses that would be considered historic in the past that had been considered for demolition, not the corner houses, but in, in my reading from how this got established. This does allow, within 10 days of a decision, for them to appeal to the city council. So, if they, if the city council, if they appeal to you, and you determine that, no, they need to go through this process, then yes, it could take up to three months to get through that process. So, the, the demolition would be stayed for three months at least. They could appeal that a second time as well. So, they could appeal to you once, whether or not they were considered or a part of this historically significant building. They could also appeal if historic preservation said, no, you need to take further action to, to try and stay the demolition, like you can make, can appeal that to council as well. So, try to make sure there's enough appeals in this that nobody would be backed into a corner because we got rid of a lot of the, um, timeframes that I think were initially an issue.
Yep.
Whereas they had to search out a potential buyer, I mean, all of that was removed from the ordinance.
And, and three months is a reasonable amount of time?
That isn't a reasonable amount of time.
Three months is a terrible amount of time.
But even if it's removed, they could still have...
Well, a demolition on, a demolition ordinance on average, a permit on average takes a month because they have to get signatures of all the utilities, and a line typically takes two to three weeks. So, I, three months is longer than what a normal house could be, but it's, I don't know that it's...
Well, and if we could get that publicly available, I think that will cover a lot of bases. If it can be put up on the website, then...
We can put it on the website, and we can have a copy at City Hall, so people can stop in. You have, you have to get a demolition permit for whatever you're gonna tear down. You have to start the process, and when you come in for requesting the permit, the city can very easily say, and this is one of the houses that could be historically significant.
How often is that list amended or added to?
It has not been amended since it was first drafted, that I know of.
Okay.
I'd be curious how many of my houses are on it.
Yeah.
Well, and I'll be honest, it's not as if staff wants any more homework to do when something like this comes to your head.
I think it's great from where we started.
It just would be nice if they knew prior to when they go to get the... It would be nice if, like, two or three months before they even went to get their...
No, I agree.
Permit that they...
We can, I mean, if the list is...
Well, it's a status, I mean, I can have Heather send out a, a mailing to them and let them know that they're considered... That would be, that would be how it should be done right there. That way, they know if they're gonna do something, they can get the ball rolling two or three months. They could go to the preservation committee and, right before they even did it, and get it going.
Cause we all have the properties that everybody already knows, the ones that are already in those...
Yeah, I just wanted, I mean, we can go ahead and notify them, I just wanted...
Right.
Know that they can't just walk in and say, I don't run this.
And if they are notified, do we notify? If they go to sell, when they're filling out their disclosure form, there is a question about, is your home in a historic district or historically significant? And I think at that point, it would be appropriate for them to fill that out so that future buyers would be aware of it. So, I think a letter would be a great...
Which I have, like I said, I have no issue with.
And that might save their work in the future. And Guy, can we get your word that you guys would put that out there?
Absolutely, and I might say that one of our projects this summer, Janet Buddha, who is previously done on the commission, is not on the commission, but she is designing a packet of information that is gonna be distributed from City Hall, anytime somebody comes in, for instance, to get their, get the, uh, water bill. Any change of ownership, they automatically get this packet of material about historic preservation, get their house is in the district, if it's on the register, or if it could be a significant. So, we can, we will provide that information. But in answer to your specific question, yes, we can get that, uh, on our website, we have it publicly on the media.
Two things for you. One, you can vote to table this first reading tonight, wait till those notifications go out so that somebody would have all three readings. Or you can approve the first reading, knowing that you have a second and third, you can table at any time as well. Or you can vote to deny it.
I just got one more question. Do you happen to know how many houses that aren't in historical districts that are on the list, roughly?
I really don't know, Eric, I don't wanna guess, it could be off, or it wouldn't be fair.
I just wanted to know if it's gonna be a huge amount that the mailers would have, or it's 50 to 100, or whatever.
It, I, I don't know that it would take Heather maybe half a day to go through, I mean, if it's a list of 100, we can... We have the three districts, we can just cross-reference those and see what we've got. But like I said, in the opt-ins, there are ways to slow this process down if you would like.
I think, given the discussions and the revision, I feel comfortable with making a motion to approve ordinance five dash six dash 2019A with the edit on the demolition regulations as stated.
Any comments? No comments, roll call please, Sue.
Herman? Yes. Roddenbush?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Weisler?
Yes.
We'll move on, ordinance... Guy, thank you very much.
Thank you, council members, and thank you, Chris, for your very work, for closing the conference, we appreciate it. I think it's really important for this community, many communities with older sections have been... We've done not have that, I think it's helped us a lot. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next item, ordinance four dash one dash 2019K, limiting Chapter 92 water rates for the Mount Vernon, for the municipal code of Mount Vernon. This is the third final reading, and as Chris mentioned, there's no other communications, so we should just build a pass this one. Not much discussion.
I'm making a motion to approve the third final reading of ordinance four dash one dash 2019A, limiting Chapter 92 water rates, yes, for Mount Vernon.
A second?
Any comments? No comments, roll call please, Sue.
Roddenbush?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Weisler?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Rose?
Yep.
All right, currently carbon carbon here, four dash one dash 2019B, limiting Chapter 99 sewer service charges for the municipal code of Mount Vernon, again, the third final reading, no new communications, Chris instead of... entertain a motion with this one.
I move ordinance four dash one dash 2019B, limiting Chapter 99 of sewer service charges in the municipal code of Mount Vernon, of City of Mount Vernon, Iowa.
Second.
Any comments? No comments, roll call please, Sue.
Weisler?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Roddenbush?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Next item, ordinance four dash 15 dash 2019A, appealing and replacing Chapter 166 subdivision regulations of the municipal code of Mount Vernon, Iowa. Anything to add with this one?
Which one? Subdivision?
Third one?
No.
Chapter 166 subdivision?
Nothing additional.
Anybody have any questions or any comments on it?
The other subdivision is about done.
Making a motion to approve, uh, ordinance four dash 15 dash 2019A, replacing Chapter 166 subdivision regulations under this for code of Mount Vernon.
Second. Any comments? No comments, roll call please, Sue.
Rose?
Yes.
Weisler? West?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Roddenbush?
Yes.
All right. Next item, resolution for approval, resolution five dash six dash 2019A, resolution fixing a date for a meeting on a proposition to offer as a loan and dispersal agreement and issuance of notes to evidence the obligation of the city they're under.
You can tell I don't put this one together, right? Uh, this is for the 1.8 million SRF funding for UV disinfection and other treatment plan improvements. Remember that this is a reimbursement, so this is up to 1.8. If we don't end up spending 1.8, we don't have to bar 1.8.
Any questions or anything?
In that case, I will move improvement of resolution five dash six dash 2019A, approving, uh, SRF funding for the waste water treatment center improvements, up to, but not to exceed 1.8 million dollars.
I'll second that. Any comments? No comments, roll call please, Sue.
West?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Roddenbush?
Yes.
Weisler?
Yes.
All right, next item, resolution five dash six dash 2019B, approving the 2080 agreement for police services within this, with City of Lisbon.
So, Lisbon did go ahead and reapprove the same 2080 that was previously on the books. We did have a meeting, um, Rick, Connie, and myself, and Doug. We did decide that amongst the four of us, um, discussions need to happen in November, December. So, uh, they were nervous about dispatch fees going up. That decision was actually made, um, December, January, so unfortunately Connie had a, a, a meeting and wasn't able to attend the meeting, so by the time she found out, she needed to send the notice pending the 2080 because it had to be done, um, by, what was the date, April?
For the county.
Yeah. So, you're reapproving the same agreement with the exception of there was one typo where we changed hours back to 10.
Where's the good, I'm glad?
And Lisbon has already approved this.
Yep.
I'm making a motion to approve resolution five dash six dash 2019B, 80 year, 40 services for saving.
A second?
Comments? No comments, roll call please, Sue.
Roddenbush?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Weisler?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
All right, next item, resolution five dash six dash 2019C, approving fiscal year 1819 transfers.
This is a document that we have at the end of, just about the end of every fiscal year. It's a small one, it's only five changes. For most part, they're pretty self-explanatory, if you have any questions, I'll try and answer them.
The only one I had was the employee benefit for the 288,000 and change to the general fund. What, what exactly is that for? I mean, my concern is that, you know, 10 years from now, there's gonna be some, like, well, we underfunded in employee benefits because we, I mean, I don't know.
No, so, uh, employee benefits is a separate levy, right?
Okay.
Outside of the 810, um, but we pay for them with, outside of the general fund, so like police and parks. Part of my staff at City Hall gets paid out of the general fund, but we have to transfer dollars into that general fund. We collect it every year, so you're not, you're not using a, a budget simply to offset...
Okay.
This is just a, a natural movement, but we have to just, or not justify, but we have to state...
We have to record.
To the state that we're taking them from these funds. The only one, um, that you could look at would probably be the TIF to that service. We have to guess every October on our capital projects. And then we have to certify TIF by December, so the way that we have to meet our deadlines can get us off a little bit, so... It's a small amount, but that would be the one where you're, you'd probably look at, you know, why would it fall from that one?
Thank you for the question. With that, unless anybody has anything else, I would approve resolution five dash six dash 2019C, approving fund transfers for this fiscal year.
A second?
Any comments? No comments, roll call please, Sue.
Weisler?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, Roddenbush?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
You only vote once, Tom.
Resolution five dash six dash twenty nineteen D, approving contract and bond for mobilization and construction of a wastewater treatment plant and treatments.
So you've already approved the bits. Um, WRH has now submitted their contract and bonds, they've been reviewed by the engineer. The bid amount right now is one million, three hundred and ninety thousand with merchant bonding company under Des Moines holding the bond, so with this approval, we will hold a pre-construction meeting Thursday, I believe, and then they will get started on the UV disinfection.
And they've done work, they do work, or were in Lisbon?
They have. They've done a lot of work in and around the area after I received a, an email from Emily, so they're very, BK is very comfortable with them, so.
All right, I move to approve resolution five dash six dash twenty nineteen D, approving contract and bond for mobilization and construction of wastewater treatment plan and treatments.
My second.
Any comments? No comments? Roll call please, Sue.
Rose?
Yes.
Weisler?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Rodda Bush?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to the motion for approval. Considerations made to this?
I just have a question on the additional claim. What is that top line item of Hill? Twenty fifteen GOE slash WTE.
G O. It's a G O, huh?
Oh.
Anybody else have any questions or any last standing motion?
I'm going to approve the claims list.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Discussion consideration of engagement agreement with dollars and cooney for one point eight million sewer overdue capital note.
A little backwards, but the way the agenda sets up, I kind of have to do it this way, but anyway, the big resolution that I did put together, it was put together by this attorney. They do all of our, our bond counsel, and they will walk us through the process. They also are in charge of reporting, uh, to the SEC throughout the process as well, so sixty-two hundred is in line with, there's only two firms really in Iowa that handle this, so it's in line.
I'm going to approve of the engagement agreement with Ayers and Cooney for the bond counsel, an amount of sixty-two hundred dollars.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Discussion consideration of pay application number two, Fifth Avenue Northwest and First Street West traffic signal installation project.
Pay application for twenty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars and thirty-five cents. You have the cover letter from B and K, they've verified the quantities and amounts, um, just looking to get this project going.
Good.
I'm going to approve pay application number two for the Fifth Avenue Northwest and First Street West traffic signal installation project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Next item, discussion consideration of pay application number five, Lester Burris Family Community Wellness Center.
So the original pay application was in the amount of one million, two hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty-two cents. However, they didn't get some paperwork into the architect in time, so I received notification from OPN that they would like to reduce this pay application by one hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars, which brings the, the pay app that you would approve tonight to one million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-two cents.
I assume we'll pay them that hundred and forty-nine thousand.
We will, um, it was, uh, the paperwork had to do with some hollow core.
No.
Some hollow core decking that is being held offsite, so it is being constructed offsite and held offsite.
Yeah.
They didn't get the paperwork and approve that that portion had been completed, so they will get paid, it's just not with this pay application.
In that case, I would move approval of pay application number five in the adjusted net debt ratios.
One point, one two five, one seven three, thirty-two cents.
That one.
Second.
Opposed?
Do we vote? We're all seconded, so. Do we have three seconds?
All in favor?
We're in the worst corner on this one.
Opposed?
Wow. Running a tight ship tonight.
Got to get outside. All right. Next item, discussion consideration of change order number ten for the Lester Burris Family Community Wellness Center.
If you will, too, I want to run through the change orders for you because, as I stated, I have a separate spreadsheet for this, I just don't approve, uh, include it in the packet. Keep in mind, if you approve change orders ten through thirteen of our three hundred and eighty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars that we started with contingencies, after you would approve change order thirteen, we would still be standing at three hundred and forty thousand, six fifty-six. So we're still doing quite well in the change order realm. I did quote what the reference to change order number ten was. It's in the amount of two thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. It was a design change, um, to offer a better termination. We concur with that. To give you one other quick note, change order three was rejected. Change order number eight was rejected. And change order twelve was rejected, so the three that were pending have all been rejected either by the city or by the design team. We have three others that were pending. One of those has already been rejected, change order fourteen, and then change order fifteen and sixteen were, a lot of paperwork going back and forth today, so those will likely be revised, I hope. So with that, I would say all three of the change orders that are on there tonight, ten, eleven, and thirteen, staff does agree with, OPN agrees with, so, uh, if you have individual questions, I'll have to answer.
They're all relatively small in nature.
Correct, so this change order ten is two thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Eleven for basically eleven hundred dollars?
Yes, one thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents. And then.
Fourteen hundred and forty-three hundred?
Yes, four thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents.
There's one with the conduit was made large, or the footing was made lar, thicker because of the conduit for the electrical underneath the stairwell. Why is the electrical getting bigger? I guess, why is there more electrical going through there?
Is that for the curtain?
That was my understanding. No.
That was under the curtain?
Oh, this is under the stairwell. They had it thick in the.
Yes.
Oh, the first one.
They had it thick in it because they were adding more electrical.
Oh, it was for a divider curtain, no, so they're adding piping. So, um, one of the things that we've been wrestling with is how do we segregate the four larger sections of the building? We have a, right across from, what I'll call the, the kitchenette area is a lounge that is connected then to the outdoor seating area and the community center space, the part that has the, um, kind of all-purpose flooring, and then we have the two courts. So all four of those technically could be divided by curtains, and that lounge area was not, not originally established to be separated or segregated from the rest of it.
It's going to help prevent balls from hitting that social area.
Yeah.
So there's controls that need to go through that piping to accommodate for moving those curtains when they need to.
Makes sense. Anybody have any questions? We'll obviously have to have a separate motion for each one of these, but.
I'll start the process with a motion to approve change order number ten, the amount of two thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and eighty cents.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Next item, change order number eleven. Keep on going.
I'll move to approve change order number eleven.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Next item, change order number fifteen.
I'm going to approve of change order fifteen, an amount of three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Next item, discussion consideration of change order number five. Chris?
This is the one Eric was referencing. This is not to do with the curtain, so this, this is the one. So we did add, um, some electrical to the exterior, so that Nick wouldn't have to do drop cords, so we added electrical to that room.
So it's going underneath the outside footing?
Yes.
Which we sensed it, we're penetrating, we're making it weaker, so we have to go deeper.
Correct. Nick didn't want to pull the drop cords everywhere.
So it's Nick's fault?
Yes.
Okay. This is, I just wanted to make sure.
The utility are going to go on that side.
These Twizzlers are coming back to bite you.
Yeah.
He's just hoping that he can get.
Let's add about six more of them.
He's just hoping he can get through twelve of them.
Well, in that case, I would move approval of change order number five in the amount of one thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twelve cents.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Discussion consideration of possible change order climbing wall?
So as I put in there, the original climbing wall was scheduled to be twenty feet. If you remember, we had skylights as an addendum of the contract. Without the skylights, the climbing wall had to stop at twenty feet. Because the bits came in where they were, we were able to add the skylights back in, we're presented with an opportunity for some, a problem for others. But the question is, do we want to add, uh, an additional four feet to that climbing wall? I have asked Matt to answer your question as far as, Matt does believe that the, the additional four feet will make a difference. So if you have any questions on the specific change, it will be north of twelve thousand dollars, because the reason it is on here now, I would say somewhere between twelve and sixteen would be my guess with labor.
So the skylights, because it allows us to install something that's that big?
The skylights actually dome up and allow the.
So there's more room.
The climbing wall to kind of go up to the ceiling without, um, without any issue.
Okay. Still, the height that we're asking for, you still wouldn't be able to touch the skylights and then you'll break them or alter the lighting in that nature. Climb down the roof.
There's, there's a couple of things, so I want to explain the types of walls that are out there and what we, what we've been educated with. There's sports climbing walls, which are typically thirty to sixty feet high. There's bouldering areas, which are typically ten feet high. The sport climbing walls are more vertical, less, um, bump outs, less angles to climb over, so that's why they're so high. Bowling walls are more angles to go around and over and, and arch out and so forth. And then traverse areas or traverse walls are very flat, but they're not very high. So a bowling area wall is about ten to fifteen feet, a sports climbing wall is thirty to sixty feet, and a traverse wall is ten feet. What we're trying to do is get all of those included into, somewhat into this wall. So it's kind of taking all of three of those types of walls and putting it into one. And El Dorado, uh, the company we were talking with, has really peaked by this, is, their interest has really peaked by this because they've never actually done this before in regards to anybody requesting this. So we're going to have three different types of abilities of a wall be utilized in our building. What I'm trying to do is get it to four more feet because if you picture a twenty-foot wall, if you've got somebody six foot five, six foot six, climbing on a wall, when they get to the first level of six foot six, they get to the second level of six foot six, they're pretty much close to the top. So we wanted to make it a little bit more, um, let's say, attractive to adults and teens especially. We're not going any wider, we're just going straight up. The other thing that this will help with, there's the big wall that's there, it'll stop at twenty feet, and then you're seeing CMU. And so to me, I don't think that's very attractive either, um, just climbing that point and stopping, and aesthetically, it's not as pleasing, so we're trying to get the best of both worlds by adding four feet, and so I think twelve thousand for the four-foot addition for the wall itself, and then we're assuming that, um, Darling will add some additional dollars for labor and for drawings and so forth, so.
How tall is that wall? Do you know?
The wall currently?
Yeah.
Well, the actual wall or the, the rock wall? The rock wall's twenty foot, the actual wall, I believe, is twenty-six, I think, off the top of my head.
I'm curious how much wall there would be.
Yeah.
So basically, six foot of wall.
Yeah, and, and, you know, as you, we didn't want to cover it all, we didn't feel that way to go. Plus, I think if you get to the twenty-six foot, then you can't actually touch skylights, so. Being, while, while, talking with the architects, we felt this would be the best solution. We can go in two-foot increments if we want to, um, but we felt four foot would give us the best of both worlds, the one we're looking for.
So the skylights are the, are the skylights like peaked?
Yeah.
And so this is going to be like right between it or something like that, so.
Yeah, but the sky is wide enough that it's not going to come that way.
Yeah, so picture two CMU walls that are just, you know, you got one at the stairwell, you had one at this rock wall. The original CMU was going to go six feet above where the rock wall was and just basically stop. Um, the skylights, I'm not sure if they're peaked or if they're domed, but, um, I think they're peaked. But it would still stop short, the CMU stops basically at the ceiling height, um, but they could look, I mean, as they're climbing up, they could look and see how, if they're not going to get in that area, per se. There's four. Where is this?
Four auto blades. Four lanes.
That's a system that allows you to go up and down and not have a spotter.
So you can't go to the top and sit on the top.
No.
You've got to go back down.
Yeah, correct, yeah, the footholds will end. So the foothold ends, the footholds will end at some point, and the auto blade, you're attached to the harness, the auto blade will allow you to go up above it. So that's the other bonus, is, you know, we don't have to worry about somebody getting to the top and start messing around and doing something that they're not supposed to. So it should work appropriately, it should be effective, it should be entertaining.
The foothold, they're color-coded based upon the type of course that you want to try to take.
Based on those three that you were talking about?
Yeah, the one where it goes out on the bump out is more like.
More challenging, and then some of them are very easy, and then also we have, so we have, that's the sport climbing aspect of it, and there's also the bump out that will add the boulder in the area, so it'll add a little bit of expertise to it. And then there's the traverse area, which is more for younger ages, send them going vertical, they'll be able to go horizontal, so they won't have to climb really high. And if somebody's scared of heights, they can still utilize this wall, but they'll be able to go horizontal, not vertical. And then the padding we have below doesn't change no matter what height we get, we've got the best padding available. It's eight, it's ten-inch thick padding, um, and we've got four of those down below, so the auto blade system, did I explain the auto blade system before? It's magnetic and weight resistant, so, um, usually when you have rock climbing walls, you have a staff person attached with you, you're attached to a harness, they have a rope connected to you, and they control your fall. They are in charge of your fall. This system is a buildup system where it's magnetic resistance, so basically that controls your fall. And this is a, an opportunity for us not to have to have a staff person there to control the individuals and the weight. So people can, and once they're trained in the rock wall, we'll give them the harness, we'll allow them to go in there and know that they know how to utilize it. They can go on there and we don't have to have a staff person forever.
The nozzle prevents them because it goes up through the second story from jumping backwards.
Correct.
Are you going to have like minimum age or height requirements to even get on that?
We will, so I'll have a line that'll be drawn for the traverse climbing, and there'll be a limit there for ages and abilities, and if they aren't trained in the harness, then they won't be able to use the, the, the auto blade system. They'll just be able to climb standing there, like I could go over this wall right now, step up on some footholds and climb on it.
Yeah.
But once they want to go above that line, they, then we'll give them the harness, they'll be trained on how it operates, and then they'll be able to climb on it. We'll have certain age restrictions on that, absolutely. Yeah, I don't think a three-year-old would be able to.
We had talked about.
There are some daredevil out there.
No, there are, but that wouldn't be appropriate, in my opinion, so, so, yeah, so we'll have some restrictions.
My kids. We have talked about adding glasses, um, do some different things where we would have it staffed from time to time, um, just, we would have to staff it since twenty-four seven. The nice part is it's completely visible from our contest as well, so that was very important to me, so that it can be monitored twenty-four seven.
And at the top, it's, it's, uh, arced out so that they can't interfere or get involved with the side walls either, so when they get closer to the top, through the second floor, they are able to climb over the railing to the freeway area or anything of that nature. They have to stay within their zone and their area, the way this rock wall is designed. So it's pretty cool.
And there's three of those?
There's four, actually. And not all of them have to be used, you can shut one down and use only three.
But that's the other thing too, is you're going to have four, if you have a staff person, you only have one person climbing at a time.
No.
Because they're, well, if it were, if you didn't have the autobay, if they were-
Yeah, correct. Or two people.
If the weight was, right, exactly, so this way you could have more-
So this is a very efficient area now, in my opinion.
I will still come down to the question in terms of spending the additional capital.
This is just beyond the mayor's ten thousand dollar limit. I know, because we're five months into the schedule, that they're, when they get the final numbers, they're going to want to get it ordered as soon as possible, or otherwise it will be delayed. So I wanted to get this in front of you. I know I don't have a definitive number, I can tell you, like I said, it's going to be somewhere between twelve and sixteen thousand dollars for the extra four feet. I, I gave you the information on the change order request, though, and where we're at, though, to let you know that I feel comfortable with where we are from a budget standpoint, to allow this to go forward. Matt feels fairly adamant about his use of this and its membership drive aspect, so.
I think it's just more attractive to adults and teens if it's a little bit higher, that just might take. And it's cool, you can see out the skylight.
Are we looking for an actual, an action here, or is this more of a?
This is more, well, so what I would like is, if you object, then obviously, then I would have to wait until I got the formal change order, bring that to you. If you're okay and it's within those parameters, or anything under, let's say eighteen thousand dollars, then the mayor can give them the go-ahead to go ahead and get it ordered. And you would still approve it if you have it. So if you remember, anything under ten thousand, he'd go ahead and approve.
Well, in that case, I would move approval of the change order for the climbing wall not to exceed eighteen thousand dollars.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Nick, that's how it's done.
With the bike from here, I don't know why.
Next item, discussion and consideration of setting a public hearing date for budget amendment one for fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
So normally, because we've actually already done, you've heard budget amendment one, this would be budget amendment two. But, with the county that rejected our budget amendment one, we had the wrong date on there. Instead of bringing that right back to you two weeks later, I just decided to wait because it wasn't time-sensitive, and just do one budget amendment. So, you were setting a budget amendment for the entire fiscal year versus doing two of the fiscal year, so.
Makes sense?
Are you proposing the next meeting?
Correct.
I move that we set a public hearing date for May twenty for budget amendment number one.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Next item, discussion and consideration of the addendum number three, professional services agreement.
So the nice thing is, is we can amend the existing contract to include all of the trail system that we just got a hundred thousand dollars from Wellmark Foundation for. Bad news is, we'll have to build this separate, because it was part of the original project, but we can use the design team, and this is slightly less, I think, than what we would have probably done, having just gone out, we've got a separate engineer, so we're able to save a few dollars on this. But this trail network will then go from Palisades to the tennis courts, to two different locations in the parking lot, to our facility. That'll be benches, trees, much nicer look and appeal throughout the whole thing, and we got a hundred thousand dollars to help pay for it.
What are we using, the match?
We'll use a combination.
The lost money?
Oh, yes, we have, right now, we have over two hundred five thousand dollars in the lost trails fund. We're not going to spend, right now, the Nature Park Trail is somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred to a hundred and ten thousand, if I remember correctly. We do have dollars available with the Wellness Center project, because some of the trail is actually there, so probably use some of those, because part of that was part of this project to begin with, but and we have, I mean, we have three or four different pots of money that we could take from, for the hundred thousand if we needed to, but at a minimum, we do have a lost funding available.
So, I'm fully in support of this, I just, one thing I want to be considered, especially with these additional funds, is that I want to make sure that we have walkability from the other parts of town to the Wellness Center, you know, this is, the trail's going to be in around it, but obviously, I think it's also important to make sure that we can get people to the Wellness Center.
Yeah, so-
And I know, I guess, there are some, there are some areas that don't have them, like, you know, all of Palisades Road, not all of it has it.
This goes back to the existing, that does connect up to that sidewalk.
Okay.
It made more sense to do this than it does to try and extend the sidewalk on the north side of Palisades. The homeowner, well, the homeowners that are on that side would have to put a very expensive-
Grave.
Yeah, the grave is a huge issue, they'd have to put an extensive retaining wall in.
About the long to the back, I don't know, I just-
Well, so this will come across the burn right on the backside of them, so so if you're, if this is the building here, right behind Kooters is the Stormwater Detention, it will go back there, it will go straight across, and then from Palisades, all the way from Palisades up to this connection, plus the tennis courts, and so, the whole area will be connected, just more so than in our facility. It does give us the opportunity to put future stations.
Fitness stations, elder fitness stations, we could put, we've got landscaping in mind, we've got some opportunities for some other recreational purposes we could put out there. We'll talk about a few things in the future, but this is the start of that network.
And Stephanie, to your point, when I was back in my Parks and Rec days, there's a map that we had that showed the community connectedness, and there were just a couple, there were startlingly few gaps, like Eighth Avenue is one, but there are few routes in town that weren't pretty, there was a pretty good loop around the city getting where we needed to go.
There is a few, so we have a map that we utilize when we talk Park and Rec and master plan and trails and those things. There are a few areas, like Scott mentioned, in the city that don't have sidewalks, so if you can envision, I think it's Third Avenue, or Third, yeah, Third Avenue, right? Where kids might be walking to school, I mean, even on, is it Fifth, the school? There's no sidewalk on either side of the school there either, so, but we have to be careful, just because sidewalk or trails, that's the question, we've been here before.
I know, I, you know, I'm just, I'm glad to hear that it has been discussed.
Yeah, so Eighth doesn't have any sidewalks, we've discussed a trail there, if Eighth Street does become a project, we might be able to piggyback on that, but just to full out do a trail there, will become expensive.
Right.
Fifth, Third, those-
I just wonder if there's, you know, some places where it's a fairly small section?
Yeah.
That would resolve some things.
But it is on a, it's been on the radar for a long time, whenever, yeah, exactly, like when Eighth comes up for replacement, and whenever these sections, it is on that, as part of that plan.
Yeah, this actually wouldn't have been a priority, per se, without the hundred thousand dollars grant, so it moves up a few notches, because Wellmark had very specific requirements, we honestly didn't think we were going to get this. We kind of thought we would apply for the big match, and then get denied, and then be eligible for one of the smaller ten to fifteen thousand dollar matches. So it was quite a shock when we got the, Matt and I were actually in interviews when I got the notification that we got a hundred thousand dollars, so. Good album to have.
Absolutely.
Is it something we'll maybe have to keep clear in the winter time then?
Yeah, Nick's a lover.
Okay, Nick?
There's a reason that I let him buy stuff.
That's why.
He can't use that big loader.
Right. So, but this would be paved, this is like, this is in-
That's the concept, no, we may have paint, that's what we priced it out for, and so, like I said, if we didn't get it, then we would go to an alternative.
Lighting's going to be important.
Yeah, but, you know, the school's in favor of it too, you know, we look at it as a safe route to school, and that's-
They better be, really.
Yeah, correct.
One more question, so it goes north of Kooters, and comes down to the west side of Kooters, connecting to Palisades Road, or to a sidewalk on the north side of Palisades Road. Is it going to go through on the west side of Kooters, along a property line or down the middle of that shared land between the school district? I.e., is there something, should it go down the middle so that, that becomes the use for that space? Or is there some plan down the road to put something in the middle of that space? Should it be on a border, or should it be down the heart of it, I guess is my question.
It would, so on the very west side, it's on the border, I will tell you this, not one of us is going to be able to build in that area, because it is in a detention area. So, there is a drainage channel that comes down the west, that the city's already spent twenty-five thousand dollars on fixing. There's also a drainage area coming right through the heart of our ten acres, back behind Kooters, that connects almost kind of in a Y shape. So, if you ever walk back there, back behind the high school, so all of that area drains from Cornell, all the way down. I don't want to say it's impossible, because if you have enough money, anything is possible, but it would be impossible for either entity to build anything down there because of the costs associated with mitigating water.
After talking, it seems that we felt this is the best use of the land, with the way it lies.
Yeah, I think the addition, potentially, of the stations in the future, as far as they, I call them stations, I call them outdoor-
Upper fitness.
Areas, but they are kind of the new craze, where you can go on a trade-
It's not the new craze, he's been wanting this for the last-
I didn't know about Piggled Ball before I started this either, so.
We barely shook hands when he was talking about it. Here's what we're going to do with these. Yeah, it's all right, yeah.
Yeah, but that's for the future, we'd like to get the network started, see people use it, and then start installing some new things and make it fresh and new, and usable, efficient, functional. But I think the key is connecting the high school is the main connection, because we're going to have kids that are going to be parking in our parking lot, they'll need to get there, they'll take the shortest route A to B, and that's naturally going to be a trail that goes across there, and there'll be a culvert there, they'll go over the top of the culvert, connect there, connect to the tennis courts, and then wind around, connect to the Palisades, and then connecting to the Wellness Center, so, and we'll still have the existing sidewalk on Tenth, it'll be there, that can access the middle school crowd and so forth.
Correct, so we need a motion to approve the additional design teamwork?
I would-
I move approval of amendment number three of the contract with OPM Architects. One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Matt, you're two for two? Discussion and consideration of loader lease purchase. All right, Nick, follow us.
I would highly suggest, if you want to purchase any piece of equipment, to hire our public works staff. About as thorough as it will get. If you remember, we were here about a Duesen, new to the market, they, we leased it for two months, got us through the winter months. It was a smaller unit, I always challenged the staff to make sure, you know, knowing that this is going to be a fifteen to twenty-year piece of equipment, you best be sure, when we make a recommendation to the council, that this is the one that you want. So they took that challenge and had four different vendors with four different companies here at various times.
Yeah, within two months.
It was actually an intriguing process to start, but, long story short, John Deere came back with a slightly larger machine. We were warned that they would be aggressive because they want to control this market, and they were. We have some pieces of equipment that we had originally planned in this year's CFP that we're not going to purchase, that frees up some money for this, and potentially a truck purchase, we'll talk about later, but I thought Nick gave a great report, we essentially want to spend about sixteen thousand dollars more than we had planned for the smaller unit, but we're getting a bigger unit, bigger bucket, better terms. And a piece of equipment that's not going to lose its value.
And I think it's important, Chris had mentioned that the smaller unit had a hard time with the hills.
Yeah, it didn't, it just kind of bogged down a little bit. It obviously made it up and down the hills fine, but it, you know, it was a four-cylinder.
A four-cylinder compared to the six, the test roll for John Deere.
We can take heavier buckets up and down our hills and-
Carry more material if we have to.
Does the sixteen include the brush attachment that you talk about for parking lots, or would that be-
No, that would be something separate down the road.
All right, so are there, does the John Deere, are there other attachments that it could accommodate that we might need down? I mean, this is, if this is going to be a ten or fifteen-year kind of purchase, right, like, what we need out of it may very well change in five or ten years.
So, in some of our research, I asked, the possibility now that we're going to take over Highway Thirty, the right-of-way, having that mode, a bigger unit to do that, or do we possibly just hire that out twice a year with the state, I don't know. But you've seen those boom loaders, and in research, they said that we could do that, they just said they're slower on these loaders, so that was one thing I was thinking that is a possibility, but it's probably more so just going to be more efficient for winter. We found that out with the rental of the smaller unit, and, I mean, smaller, we're talking, you know, minute things here, but some of the efficiencies of the six-cylinder having a bigger hydraulic motor, it just made it smoother, the operation smoother. So then we reached back to Duesen and said, hey, do you have a bigger unit? Well, everyone kind of has their own niche and where their size needs, so it wasn't always completely apple to apple, so that's how, kind of, kind of come up with our price point. Researching with cities in similar size, with Kokoda, DeWitt, Cent standpoint, Solon, most of them are bigger, like, Kokoda and DeWitt are actually the size bigger than the one we're giving. But, we still feel pretty confident that this, for fifteen years, with our city never having a loader, we feel really confident that, you know, the biggest machine we have right now is the backhoe, and trying to turn compost with that would not be efficient at all, and now we're getting in the compost, and all those towns are doing that, so we just feel really confident in that, so. Extra attachments and a bigger set of forks, helping for all of Matt's festivals, we'll be able to move those concrete berries a little quicker, so, certain things like that.
I think the one thing, but to answer your question, the previous positions I have had John Deere equipment, the nice thing about John Deere equipment is, either in Eastern Iowa, in Hekin, I mean, most of that equipment's being built in the vicinity. The other thing too, is if you have somebody on staff that can weld, you can manufacture yourself some items, so, for instance, we have a large parking lot, and we got sheet metal, and we've manufactured our own push bucket, you know, a fraction of the cost, so, I would say the nice part about it, Nick's recent hired, recent hires, and they have two guys that can probably fabricate something if we needed to, make a change, but.
Or we may approach you with the possibility of, maybe not this machine, cleaning the parking lots with a bigger blade, but with our skid loader, getting a big push blade, the guy we hired from DeWitt came from, and said they put it on the tractor loader, and the skid loader will push it, and you'd be able to clean the new Wellness Center parking lot in probably half the time that it would take our current skid loader, so. Just, it's going to free up different pieces of equipment. One of the biggest things I've seen from getting to use that loader was just the safety, and we used to load trucks out with the skid loader, where you can't even see, you know, over the side of the truck as you're loading with the skid loader, so you've got this load above your head the whole time, and with the loader, you're actually getting to be up there at eye level of what you're loading. The safety that way, so, and they, all the units, since John Deere came to us and said, hey, the backup camera's standard, so, then we requested that on all the other units, so we do have a camera that helps see behind us, you know, that doesn't mean we won't have some accidents, but, you know, there's just those things that, we're trying to figure out all the options that are out there for us.
Have you done a usage, this is a seven-year, four thousand hours, how many hours do you-
you expect?
So not having compost, and just kind of comparing to what we're putting on our skid loaders each year. So for two skid loaders, we put about eight hundred hours, so that's gonna cut out of that time, and the loaders only at like two hundred because it's strictly for, you know, the backhoe usage on it. So I kinda averaged at five hundred, so I think it'll be on the warranty that's full seven years. You know, a heavy winter would kind of, you know, change the values, but that's my guess.
A heavier unit did help break ice this year, which was problematic on, was letting it over one of the first times in a long time. But we will, we will initially sign a three-month or three-year lease, and this allows us to stair-step into the purchase price, so I don't have to borrow any additional funding. It ends up costing us about just under sixteen thousand dollars over the three years, if we have to wait that long.
There's no penalty.
Yeah, there's no penalty. So after this year, if, since like I said, we are not purchasing some equipment, if we wanna purchase it outright, there wouldn't be a penalty and it'll actually be less interest for us. So we'll monitor that fairly closely, but it's that they have exhausted and done what they've asked them to do as far as the research is concerned.
Well done.
Every time we brought in a different machine, we said, I don't know what happened. We're like, wait a minute. We're gonna sit down and actually have a discussion on wants and needs here.
Let's break the schedule.
Yeah, it was pretty interesting. So, but they definitely did, they helped do the homework. I was sending them to, you know, different dealers going, go look at this, because they said this is different. Everyone, you know, has their little market they're trying to play in. So we definitely, the best thing that I think, the most comfort out of the deer was when I put that same warranty match that, a couple of companies were like, no, we can't do that. That's why you saw Deere and Doosan have two breakdowns, because they, they're like, yeah, we'll work for that one.
That's huge.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Any other questions for that?
The total purchase price would be not the, not to be greater than one hundred and sixty-four thousand.
I would make a motion to purchase the John Deere five twenty-four LXT, not take speed, one hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. I'll second. All up there?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you very much, Duncan.
In order to that lead program.
Next, I have a special consideration of agreement with Clifton, Larson, Allen, and Bradley for loan forgiveness for auditing and accounting services.
Yeah, very small increases, five hundred to Clifton, Larson, and then Larson Allen, and then fifty dollars to Bradley's amount. Bradley helps us with all the state forms. It is going to get a little bit more complicated this year because of the property tax change, changes to the law. We have some more hoops to file through. We are no longer required to certify our budgets by March fifteenth. That will be moved out to March thirty-first, I believe. So the small increases are probably more than warranted. I was happy with, I've been up and down with Clifton before, but as of the last three years, I've been happy with the audit, the timeframe that they took to get it back to us, and the people that they've had. After combining, they had some staff turnover, but I think we're fairly consistent right now. So happy with both, asking that we conform with both.
I would make the motion to approve our agreement with Clifton, Larson, Allen, and with Brown High for auditing and accounting services.
Second.
All up there?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Alright. Next, I, the old fire station.
Okay. So, one of your goals for myself and my staff was to find an adaptive reuse for the old fire station from a private entity. I have tried this twice with both private entities, more or less saying that the numbers just don't work, which I don't need any decisions made, I just wanted to get your opinion in front of you. I would like you to consider that goal for my staff, because it's not one that we can push. So one of the things that we have talked about in the past is the demolition of that old building. It still leaves us with some potential issues as far as space. I have heard, and we have talked, yes, it's there and we started to use it, now we feel it's important, but you know, I would say that we should have been putting our, I said fifty-seven thousand dollar pieces of equipment, that's some more with all of the computer stuff in it. But you know, each one of those police units, cruisers, is a significant piece of equipment. To have it sit outside and be compromised with all of the electronics that are in there, doesn't make a lot of sense. We did talk about potentially moving some things over to the public works site, but we don't have a building there yet. We're looking at alternatives there as well, but you know, and finally, we talked about police space. So if you look at City Hall in general, it's, I don't wanna say it's mismanaged, it's not mismanaged, it's just the way that it was set up doesn't lend itself to the existing staff that we have today. So we have a lot of officers that are packed in one room. We have an evidence room that makes me uncomfortable. It's just, there's a lot of stuff in it. And the good news is that it requires the police department to purge when they can, but some of that equipment, or some of that evidence has to stay forever, correct?
Forever.
Yeah. So DNA evidence, things of that nature. What I would like to do, or what I would like you to consider thinking about, is potentially demolition, or demolishing the old fire station and allowing staff to just get a rough idea what it would cost to add on to the existing City Hall. So doing exactly what some of the private developers had talked about doing. The affordability of trying to find a site outside of downtown for the PD, to me, is just not there. You have to add restrooms, you have to add mechanical rooms. It adds at least fifteen hundred to two thousand square feet to that construction site. Not that downtown is the most ideal for the PD coming and going, but from a money management standpoint, this is our best option. I can't tell you whether or not we could afford to do that, because I have no idea. I'm expecting somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred fifty dollars a square foot, and it would be about three thousand square feet. But this is an odd-shaped lot, so I don't wanna sit here and put numbers out there. But before I do any of that, I need the blessing of the council to change the mindset of this goal. Now, if you want me to continue to research and search out people that would be interested in potentially private redeveloping that, I can. I can tell you that I worked with two of the largest developers in Eastern Iowa, and they can't make the numbers work. So that's kinda why I'm back in front of you. I don't typically like to admit defeat, but this is a tricky one for me. So there's kinda me just rolling it out for you. Wanted to get your thoughts, let you think about it a little bit, see how you wanted to move forward. So out of all your goals, this is like the one that's hanging out, but the rest of them are either in or done, or they're being worked on. So.
That would classify as defeat.
Of course.
No.
It was one that was gonna be very lofty.
Yeah.
If there were an easy answer, we'd have already been there.
Years ago.
I just, like I said, I might be shortchanging this, but I look at the elevation changes and I think that we could do, do like one level addition with a garage below that could house the vehicles for, if they allow us to use the restrooms that are here and count those, then it would be the cheapest option that we have out there to get more space. I really don't foresee us joining forces with Lisbon. I think we'll continue this twenty-eighteen. But we spent almost a year talking about potential for combined services, and I just think it's time for us to start making some decisions for the future. And if, if that does happen, then there's a lot of conversation pieces that would need to happen, and we can have those in the future.
I just think it makes sense, like, we need to start looking at other options.
Yeah, it, it, it has the feeling of having given it the old college try. You know, and, and we've had people look at it, we've had them run the numbers and try and figure out ways to make that work. And so I would echo Jamie's, it's not defeat. We took a look at it and just wasn't gonna.
I think if we could get somewhere in the neighborhood of a half a million to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for an addition of three thousand square feet in it, that would give serious pause to something that we might wanna take a look at. And the best part is that we'd see minimal disruption. So one of the things that we talked about with the project that did kind of fold was that we were gonna have to move out for at least a year, rent space, move back in. It was gonna be a logistical nightmare for us, but we would make that work. There are things that we could add in to a small addition, i.e. this room, change some things around down here as well. I would, as soon as the community center is open, I'd like to stop utilizing this as a birthday area, just because it's a challenge for us with the new key card system and things like that. So I just wanted to, like I said, wanted us to get this in front of you, let you start thinking about it, and see what your thoughts were.
Two points. Keep, keep the private developer option open if somebody happens to. Second thing is, we could get a consultant or an idea person to come up, and we spend a lot of money on this person. They could come up with ideas that we don't like, so we should still be back to zero. So I think it's probably time to get off the dime and start looking at this option here with a half going to three quarters of a year, and do something here.
Now, if, if it's well beyond that, then obviously we'd say no. But we do have, obviously we have an architect that's working on another facility. I'd like to at least approach him and ask them what it could be just to look at something like this, a cursory, and it's gonna be some money, but to come in and
I'm sorry, Doug.
Take a review of this area and just kinda give us a rough idea.
When was City Hall built?
Eighty-eight. Yeah, that was kinda one of the crying scenes about the project of being proposed. This is not an old building. It's not a tired building.
No, my, my, the reason, my reasoning for asking it is, if we're gonna do this, what I don't wanna do is hamstring council thirty years from now. If we look at the growth that we're expecting in the city with the amount of development that we have going on, I'm sure there are per capita numbers of police officers that are, you know, so I guess my thought, and I'm sure that you're already there, but let's look at what it's gonna look like twenty, forty, fifty years now.
Yeah, so Doug and I talked about that. That is the, the true trick of it all. So the interesting part about Mount Vernon because of the colleges, we've already made a jump that a lot of community centers have been making, so they're like five or six thousand people. I mean, they don't make the jump to full service. Center Point, for instance, still utilizes Lynn County Sheriff. Solon still utilizes Johnson County Sheriff. There's really, I mean, statistically, there are numbers out there that say, when you reach this population, you should have this many officers. I think if you tried to go through that standard in all of Iowa cities, you'd probably maybe find one or two that meet it, and everybody else does not. It's because the general fund has timing, and you know, funding additional people is a difficult thing to do. So, so the good news for us is, from an officer standpoint, I could see us adding, and probably should see us adding a, an assistant, whether or not it's like a permanent part-time, thirty-hour-a-week person that answers phones and does paperwork. That'll be your next hire, and you could potentially see one more officers. And then I told Doug, if I got him that, then he was just gonna have to deal with it for the rest of my time.
Which my time's less than his time.
So he was like, yeah, sounds good.
No. Realistically, I think from a numbers, I mean, we would have to almost double in size, I think, before we got to a point where we started talking about multiple shifts. You know, at that point, we're talking about fire department and whether or not the state volunteer. I mean, there's a whole lot.
There's a whole other conversation that happens.
Things that would happen, so.
Well, I think based off the conversation, Chris, you have a green light to do it?
Well, we'll get some rough numbers and, and, you know, start presenting some things and just kinda take a cursory look and see where we're at. And, you know, maybe the numbers are so far off, and if, and if it's north of a million, then we're, we're talking about something that can't happen for five to seven years anyway. If it's south of a million, then it's, you know, might be conceivable in three or four years.
And when you put those together, could you just, and I would imagine you have that in hand, but just a reminder on what it would take to make the fire station useful again? Just a quick.
I can tell you that when Chai Hattery looked at it, the number was just over three-quarters of a million. I think that number's low.
Okay. So just to make that building useful, there's.
The whole back end is falling off.
I have, in my career, renovated, not personally renovated, but gone through a renovation of something similar to offices. You ended up taking out the floor. So that, that cost was a little over one point three million dollars.
Gotcha. Okay.
Maybe we'll get some extra parking spots, too. Alright, anybody else have anything on fire station? Jake, anything you wanted to add or anything?
I would just, I've shared a lot of my reports and my annual report, my, my struggles with the officers and stuff like that. The current facilities we're operating were, it was built in nineteen eighty-eight with four officers, designed for four officers. We've been to six since nineteen ninety-seven, was the last time we've added an officer to the position and stuff like that. So our workload has probably gone up dramatically since then. It's the type of crimes that we're investigating are complex and other things like that. Regulations have changed, and that's where we talked about, when I told Chris the DNA stuff, that has to be kept forever. That's forever. And so we have to keep some of that. There's other things that we have to keep in ten, fifteen years, and things like that. So I showed Chris the evidence room. I'm happy to show any of you if you wanna go with me and take a tour sometime. I've got things scattered in three different buildings to try to accommodate. You walk into my office, and I've got stacks in my office, because we just don't have any storage room anywhere else. So it is a struggle, so I appreciate the council looking at it and trying to help us problem solve that as well, so.
So what happened, I mean, eighty-eight to ninety-seven is not that far. I mean, that's, that's not a big jump in time. Did we go to twenty-four-seven? What happened in that time?
In that time.
We went from building for four to all of a sudden we're still growing in less than a.
In the mid-nineties, we went from, they went from four to five. I have to look back at the exact timeframe if I can find it. Ninety-three, ninety-five, something like that. They went to their fifth, I think ninety-three, they went to their fifth officer, and then shortly thereafter, they went to the sixth officer.
And is that when we went to twenty-four-seven, or were we already there?
Yeah, so five, five officers, we were trying to be twenty-four-seven, but if somebody was on vacation or called in sick or something like that, you're right back to having somebody on call on Sundays and different things like that. And so overtime went up at that point.
Sure.
And so the council's decision was, when they looked at the numbers and everything, then they hired the sixth officer that provides some stability and go through from there. So we're able, you know, it's not a big struggle for us right now to staff one officer twenty-four-seven as it goes through. If, you know, there's times we've got one on injury or something like that, we, we still spend a little bit overtime, but you're always gonna have that, and we always have some of that, so.
Yeah, the, the minimum needed to fulfill the hours to go to twenty-four-seven is five. It's unrealistic, but that that's the minimum. So normally, when you make the leap to six, you've, you've got enough to go to the full. And like I said, I do foresee us, in order to keep up with new regulations, adding an assistant.
Well, we've talked about that.
Yes, so we, you know, like everything, I try to forewarn you at least a year before we start bringing the stuff back, so everybody.
I just don't want it to be a thing where we spend, you know, three-quarters of a million or a million dollars, and then less than ten years later, well, well.
And I can't, like I said, I can't guarantee any of that.
No, I'm not asking for guarantees. I just wanna see if we can learn some lessons from the past, of how are we doing this and how are we gonna do it better?
I could foresee a transition of space if we'd be, so at that point, if we're that size, then I could see a different position for Heather, more of a city planner versus associate planner. I could see actual inspectors, whether or not to be. I could see actual inspectors, whether or not to be a renter or something like that. So it's not as if the space wouldn't be used. But again, there's a decent amount of space here. It's just not designed in a manner that helps us because the interview room isn't big enough to put an office in there. We have the conference room, so we could put an office in there, but if we do, it's almost too big for an office. And then with our ability to have full meetings outside of here. And my office, if you really look at it, is way too big for one individual. We have two in there right now, but the goal is to move her out with Nick when Matt moves his office as well, so that she has her own space. Hard to have a meeting when both of you are in there, especially for me, since half of mine are confidential, so.
And that's a confidentiality aspect, I think, is a huge aspect that my officers complain a lot about is because we are so public with what we do. We're right here in City Hall and Sue and the other employees, the other staff members can attest to when we have a major incident going on, we will inundate City Hall very quickly and we will take it over, take over account center, take over everything, just to manage whatever we're dealing with. At the same time, you have people coming in while we have suspects in the lobby.
Yeah, that's the uncomfortable part of this.
Same situation.
Right.
If you remember the Martell bank robbery, we picked them up in town and had them up here with FBI, DCI agents, ourselves, running around. And it was very chaotic at the same time. You've got people coming and picking the water bottles with their children right next to them. And it's just situations like that. Our interview room used to be an office for the ambulance people. As soon as, for the records manager for the ambulance service, once she went down to their facility, we, we kind of commandeered that without a whole lot of asking just because we needed that extra room to make an interview room. It's not secure. There's a window in it, so if I put a suspect in there, they can open the window, crawl out, or they can just go out the door right around the front, she yawn. There's nothing we can do about that. So I've got a lot of concerns. We've been getting by, been getting by, so I'm hoping that sooner than later, we can resolve some issues.
Not to mention the face he gives me every time I find a solution for another department. Like he's the tail end and he's like, really? And of course, Matt was like digging an item aside.
I did offer that there, you know, there was a nice addition onto that wellness center that you could look at as well.
Did Nick at least give you some twizzers?
No. Thank you, councilman. Hey, again, it's always an open door. So if you want to come see and see firsthand the struggles we're talking about.
Which I would highly encourage.
I would love to walk you through and show you exactly what we're talking about.
I know when I walked through there, there was like three thirty packs of Bush Light up. Bong about this call.
Well, I think, you know, the difference is, is when we do have to start having these discussions, the comments always are, well, you're making it look worse than what it actually is. You're really, if you walk into their office, it's, it's hard to make it look good, but they do a pretty good job about keeping you fairly organized for the space. And there, there are six of them operating in the space that probably Sue, Marcia and Meredith operate in. I mean, it's about that compact, so.
Please come see me.
And I would like to be able to give Sue more space as well. She deals with all the financial stuff too and they all get along really well. But if we, like I said, if we can do some things with some corridors and knock a doorway through and maybe add to this facility without breaking the bank, it might be the best solution for everything if we can do that.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Anybody else? We have discussion. Next, on to reports. One thing I have is obviously just a huge shout out for Chalk the Walk, so that entire team. Mother Nature is probably the star that we can put some beautiful pieces and a lot of news coverage as well. So another fantastic Chalk the Walk. Anybody else have anything for council, community?
Doug might recognize us. Citizen Mert Bowers, Seattle Public Zed, with their Women of Achievement Awards. Selected Mert in basically her third career now as a retiree, but as a key person at the Community Development Group. And she's a part person for that. And so, once in honor of her, on June sixth, at the Kirkwood Center Hotel, and that's pretty cool.
And there is a reminder at the end, May ninth, right? Yes, the community is invited to this spirit of mainstream award unveiling, unveiling celebration from five to six thirty at this, at the local.
Anybody else have anything? Chris?
We've been at the Walk some couple of years and from words to what we've accomplished, what this council's accomplished. So I'm excited, tired, but excited. Now, I, I, the only other thing that I, you know, the other good news that we got is Lynn County has decided that they are gonna move forward with that project. It looks like we can get the resurancing done all the way to Third Avenue and Mont Vernon Road. First street, so there's another one that, you know, it's kind of hanging out there. And I've struggled with this mildly about whether or not do we continue, but I really look at that streetscape element and the fact that we have some older infrastructure underneath that. Plus the disruption to the businesses, that means a lot more conversation than this schedule is going to allow. So if people do ask, why are you stopping at Third? I think that's, that's the reason right now is we would be rushing that project forward to go through the downtown, you know, past Highway one. Not that it doesn't beat it either. I was at Chalk the Walk, there were some great artists that made storm clouds out of, you know, cracked asphalt. So I was impressed with that. I get it, I do understand that, but I think we, we need to take advantage of this project now while we, while we got an opportunity and then we'll continue to look forward to this project, so.
Anybody? Otherwise, for the business, anything to share?